Good evening. Let's call this meeting to order. Ms. Donna, roll call?
Yes. Mr. Moore?
Here.
Ms. Lanning?
Here.
Mr. Garing?
President.
Ms. Chesney?
Here.
Ms. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Garcia?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here. I'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
At the Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion for the approval of the agenda?
We have a motion.
I'll call that a motion in a second.
I have Assar and Whitney.
Assar and Whitney, mhm.
Okay.
Did you call the vote, please?
Yes. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Mr. Garing?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And the motion passes? Seven zero. Okay, Dr. Kraus?
All right. In Dr. Seacrest's absence, I'm gonna talk you through the health insurance revision. Dr. Seacrest gave you all this information last time, but it's just now in paper form. On scenario two A in your packet, those were the numbers that were included last time when this was discussed. Scenario two B has the corrected numbers. There was never any intent to minimize the district contribution toward the EPO as it went along. So on scenario two B, the number's on the very right-hand column there in the middle, the eight twenty forty-three. You'll see it's the district's cost with each of the four different subdivisions within that EPO plan. So these are the numbers that were intended. The numbers for the HSA and for the PPO are identical to what they were last time. Does anyone have any questions?
I don't have a copy of that.
Oh, it's, should, it's on the...
It's attached.
I mean, I can look it up online. Okay.
Should be attached.
Perfect.
Okay, yeah, there's an attachment there. And with the difference in the district's contribution, you'll see it changes the total cost a little bit. But that was, that was the, these numbers on two B are, were the intention all along.
May I have a question?
I'll second it.
Have a motion in a second?
Okay. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Garing?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes. And the motion passes? Seven zero. Thank you, Dr. Kraus. Okay, Dr. McGinnis?
Yes, tonight we get to recognize and honor Ms. Garcia for serving as a board member for the last three years, so we're gonna have to go to the front. And I just want to add, being on the board sometimes is a very thankless job. This is a volunteer position. They do not get paid for this, and so let's give Ms. Garcia another round of applause for it.
Thank you, it's been an honor. Okay, is there a motion to certify the results of the April eighth election?
I make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Rhonda. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia? She's gone. Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Mr. Garing?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And the motion passes? Six zero. Okay, Ms. Donna?
Yes. That's Ms. Miller and Ms. Kearns. Is she here? There she is. You both can come up here. I will start you.
Hi, I didn't see you sneak in. Might be a hype there.
All right, which one wants to go first? Okay, Jennifer, raise your hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Missouri, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of School Director N and F of the St. Joseph's School District, County of Ukeville, State of Missouri, to the best of my ability, according to law. Thank you ma'am. If I can get you to sign this right here. And then you can take your seat right here. Thank you. And you all have had it. So raise your hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Missouri, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of School Director N and F of St. Joseph's School District, County of Ukeville, State of Missouri, to the best of my ability, according to law. Thank you. Thank you, ladies, and congratulations. Welcome to the board.
Okay, I will now turn the meeting over to Dr. McGinnis.
Okay, now we are up for election of board officers. The first election this evening will be for the Office of President for the Board. Nominations are now open for President.
I'd like to nominate Latonya Williams for President.
Okay, Latonya Williams is nominated. Are there any other nominations?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Rhonda Chesney as President.
Okay, this election will be by roll call. We will first call for the first person nominated, which was Latonya Williams. Ms. Donna, will you please do the roll call?
I will. Mike Moore?
Yes.
Rick Garing?
I'm going to abstain. I'm gonna say something really quick. This, probably about twenty minutes ago, this is not something planned. This is not something. I, I want to thank the Board for these last two years. I think this has been great. I want to thank Latonya Williams for her leadership. It's been a privilege to serve under her as President. What's most disappointing to me, I'm gonna try to hold it, what's most disappointing to me is I think actually Dr. McGinnis is gonna be a fantastic Superintendent, and it's devastating that I'm not going to serve this last year under her, and it hurts a lot because she's so fantastic for this district. And to Mike Moore, we didn't know each other well, but he is a great friend to me. But there's a saying that if, if what you're doing is costing your peace, then it's too expensive. And this last year, I haven't had peace. It's affected my family life. It's affected my mental health. It's affected my physical health. And I will still be a fan of the public school system, and I always will. But I am, I am resigning. I am bowing out. I, I no longer have, have peace doing this. And it's not something I take lightly, and it's killing me inside to say this. But unfortunately, I, I'm resigning my position from the Board effective immediately.
So there's a policy that, that Steve stays up until the next regular meeting, is that right?
Rhonda Chesney?
No.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
No.
Ms. Miller?
No.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
In essence, it is a no because an abstention is a no vote.
Okay, bear with me because I'm following this here first timer.
Pardon?
Uh, nothing. We will now go to the second nomination, Ms. Chesney, and we will do the roll call. Donna?
One moment. I'm gonna get these out. So what are we even? Three, yeah, it's three, three. I'm sorry. Okay.
Three, three, my bad.
So we have a motion for Ms. Chesney, am I right?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Okay. Ms. Lanning?
No.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
No.
Mr. Moore?
No.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
We have a tie again. We have to keep doing this until someone wins. So we'll just keep going back and forth.
So again, I'll open up the floor for nominations. I'll nominate Latonya Williams.
I'll nominate Rhonda Chesney.
Do we have any other nominations? Okay, nominations are closed. We'll try this again. Donna, can you do the roll call for Ms. Williams as Board President?
Ms. Lanning?
Can you review what we're talking about? Go ahead.
This is for Ms. Williams to be Board President. Ms. Kearns?
No.
Ms. Chesney?
No.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
No.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Tie again, guys.
Three, three, so we will move to Ms. Chesney as our Board President. Donna, can you do the roll call, please?
Mr. Moore?
No.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
No.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
No. I'd like to make a motion for Latonya Williams. We also skipped a part where I believe everyone gets to speak about their nomination.
That was fine. You're all right.
I'd say let's have open dialogue now. I mean, you guys can, because we can't keep doing that all night.
We sure can.
It's a motion on the floor?
So I think when we did this last time, there was a time period or whatnot, or is that, I just want to make sure that we're like following what we're supposed to be doing.
I just watched, I just watched last year's this afternoon, and people kind of got to say why they wanted to do it or why they nominated somebody last year.
Yeah, I think it was the, the candidates get one minute to speak?
Yeah. There was some sort of process, though we're not following now.
I'm just following the script for the...
Yeah, so let's see here, guys. Let's, let's get it together here. Remarks. Once nominations are closed, each nominee may speak for no more than one minute in support of his or her candidacy. The order in which nominees speak will be determined by blind draw. After each nominee has spoken, the board members who have not been nominated may, may each speak for no more than one minute in support of a nominee. Again, the order of speaking will be determined by lot.
It's the person that... Who the nomination speaks?
Right.
And then other board members will speak?
Yes. Is there a time? One minute? One minute, and then one minute for the candidate? Isn't that what you read?
So I think, I think the nom, I think it's nominee gets to speak, not the nominator.
Okay.
Last year, the candidates spoke.
Correct. I think that's the way I read it. Each nominee may speak.
Okay.
So...
All right, we're on track.
That's, yeah.
And last year, you drew names as to who talked first.
Yes, and that's what it says.
So if I can't take, you take nominee, you take nominations, and then the order that you do the nominations and the nomination, right?
The order in which the nominees speak will be determined by blind draw.
Okay. So I've nominated Latonya, and there's another nomination out, so we need to decide who talks first.
Yeah, so I guess you put those two names in a pot and pick.
Ms. Williams? Thank you. And we would ask, as we're speaking, if the audience could keep the remarks down and applause. Anything like that, we'd appreciate it. I know that the district has a lot of tough things in order to go through in the next year. It's going to take a lot of time, a lot of work, a lot of, a lot of knowledge. And of anybody on the Board, I've been on the Board the longest. All of our admin are new. All of our upper leadership, everyone's new. And we're gonna need a lot of help along the way, and I know that I'm able to provide that. Everything else aside, it's going to take a lot of institutional, it's gonna take a lot of knowledge on the leadership level to help drive the district forward. It's not a time to learn. It's a time to work. And that is why I should be our next Board President. I'm done.
I totally agree with everything that you just said, and I've given this a lot of thought. I don't take this lightly. And I want to be more involved in the Board. I want, I, I have some ideas that I want to share as well. I feel like I have a lot to learn from you, and I would be more than willing to work collaboratively. I feel like one of the things I bring to the Board is the positivity that I can get along with, with everyone. And I want to bring that. I want to bring relationship building because I feel like that's really important. I am more than willing to do the work. I'm very blessed. I have a job that's flexible, and I don't have an eight to five job. I have flexibility in my job. And I have a passion for this district, as I know you do too, Latonya. And I want what's best for all of the children in our community, and I'm willing to put the work in to help move, move things forward because I feel like this is a pivotal point. I'm all in for the long-range plan. I'm all in of gathering community, supporting ideas because we have to bring them along with us, with us. I'm willing to communicate with all the board members and share information. And I'm, I'm willing to, to learn and move forward all at the same time, and I know I would be asking questions of you as well because I respect what you have done for the Board. I just want to be more involved, and this is, this is the angle that I want to take to be more involved.
Okay. Once, here we go. After each nominee has spoken, the board members who have not been nominated may each speak for no more than one minute in support of a nominee. And of course, we can waive our right to do so, obviously.
Do I need to draw names?
Yes.
For the order?
Again, the order of speaking will be determined by lot. Yes?
Ms. Kearns?
I can help. So I know the President's a hard position, and I greatly appreciate anybody who can do it. It's not an easy job. I do know that. And I am grateful for everything you've done up to this point. However, it's, again, it's a hard position. You have to be unbiased. You have to be able to take us in a positive perspective. And I think sometimes change is good, is what we're trying to do here. And I think right now Rhonda would be good for a change.
Ms. Lanning?
So we have a Board President that has done this for multiple years, that knows the rules and policies, that sits on the Missouri School Board Association Board, who has a certification. We have achieved more in the last two years under her leadership than I think has happened in a decade or more. Much of that is because she has worked incredibly hard. As far as listening to all board members, it is not her fault that two board members refuse to speak to her or make disparaging comments about her. And so...
I'm asking the audience...
Would, I don't know why you would want to change something when we've had so much success, other than pressure from certain people. I'll also add that once we get on the three for three, I'll be making a motion to delay a decision if we keep...
I'm asking the audience, I'm asking the audience to please, please be quiet. Please be quiet. Please be quiet, or I will empty the room. Thank you. Would you draw the next one? Next one, please.
Ms. Chesney?
I, I...
Yeah.
Yep, this will be for non-nominees.
Ms. Moore?
I look forward to your leadership because you know the district. You know teachers. You've been in the classrooms. You've been in the buildings. You work alongside those student teachers. You mentor them. You've probably taught every grade in the schools and are great at understanding what's needed for the district in encouraging greater, better test scores in both reading and math. Your desire is to serve and do that holistically, and I appreciate that. I appreciate your fairness and the way that you do get along with all of us. And that's what's necessary to bring us all along with you as you help guide us into new ways to make those things happen. I appreciate that your heart is in that and that your desire is for a cohesive Board, and that's the only way it can move forward.
Hi. Does Mike?
Mike? Thank you. You know, I took a little bit of a tactical approach to this, and I even considered and prayed for the, running for the position myself. And I took a tactical approach, and I copied off the, the list of what it takes to be a good Board Leader. This was in our agenda tonight. And nineteen items, I think. And so it's interesting. I, I wrote an L next, next to those bullet points that I thought Latonya was better at. I wrote an M next to those bullet points that I thought I was better at. And, and then, and then many, many were, were no significant difference. You know, it talks about understanding a parliamentary procedure, able to devote the time, possession of knowledge of the district operations, responsive to the community.
Hi.
And I lost.
Nominations again?
It's to call the vote now.
Call the vote?
Mm-hmm.
Or who is first on the last one?
I think you're supposed to draw who goes first.
Ms. Williams? Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
No.
No.
Ms. Chesney?
No.
Ms. Kearns?
No.
This is the vote for Ms. Chesney?
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
No.
Mr. Moore?
No.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
And Ms. Williams?
No.
So, obviously, this was unplanned, that we would have only six people. Would there be benefit? Or I guess I'll put a motion out to table the vice president election until we install another board member.
Do you think the president and the vice president?
I mean, right now, I would do the president. Right now, I would do the president. But if we're gonna have the same issue with vice president, I guess I'll do that when we get to it. And so, then my point would be that we would table this. I don't know that we actually can, though. I don't know. But I, my motion is to table this. Keep the current presidency installed until we add another position. And then they can come on and really, really upset some people. Welcome to the board.
So, would you repeat your motion?
Uh, my motion is to table.
Which means we keep what we have?
Yeah, until a new board member is installed. We're gonna have to look at the process for all of that, too.
There's a whole policy for that, too.
There's a whole policy for that, too.
Yeah, there is, and that will take.
Yeah, it's gonna take a minute. Okay. It's a motion on the floor? Is there a second? I'll second. Is the motion a second?
Give, oh, thank you, I appreciate that. Sorry.
You wanna take a, do I wanna do like a recess?
A five-minute recess, please. Okay, let's take a five-minute recess.
He's up here, and if you kids would like, could just please go and help yourself.
With your mom and dad's permission.
Yeah, with your mom and dad's. And any of those that feels like being a kid.
You can too.
We are required by statute to reorganize this board and have a board president and a vice president. So with that, we're going to do the roll call again.
Wait, hold on.
We need to make nominations again. And.
But there's a motion on the floor.
Right.
I'm sorry. Okay, so I would like, so first, to the elementary age students that came up and spoke to me and said that a member of the public called me a piece of crap, what I would like to say is that that people, no, I'm gonna keep going, people can talk badly about you, but if you're not a piece of crap, then you're fine. So, name-calling is never fun. Okay, sorry.
We're ready.
So, I withdraw my motion, and then I'd make a motion for Latonya Williams to be president.
Thank you.
Excuse me, the audience, I think we're about to get very functional if you'll let us.
There's a motion, is there a second?
We've had a.
I withdrew my motion.
To withdrew, yeah.
And then I made a motion for Latonya Williams to be president.
Uh, and that doesn't need a second, correct?
Yes, it does.
We haven't been doing that.
We haven't been on.
Just nominating again.
Oh, okay.
It's just nominating again.
I'm sorry.
Okay, this is Ashley.
Yeah.
Are there any other nominations?
I nominate Rhonda Chesney.
Are there any other nominations?
Okay, nominations are closed. As Latonya was nominated first, we will start the roll call for Latonya Williams as board president.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
No.
Ms. Miller?
No.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Williams has received the majority of the votes cast and is declared elected president. The next election this evening will be for the office of vice president for the board. Nominations are now open for vice president.
Nominate Mike Moore.
I'd like to decline that nomination and nominate Rhonda Chesney.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, seeing none, nominations are closed. We will now conduct the roll call for Rhonda Chesney as vice president of our board.
Ms. Miller? Could you repeat that, please?
The, the roll call will be for Rhonda Chesney as the vice president for our board.
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
No.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Okay, the majority of the votes have passed, so Rhonda Chesney is now declared our vice president of the school board.
Now I'll turn that over to you.
Thank you, Dr. McGinnis. And now it's time for the appointment of the secretary. And that is Donna Baker.
Sure, I would like for you to add Cassie as alternate.
That's the alternate.
So if I am unable, like I was a few weeks ago, and she had to step in, then you don't have to vote to have her
Right.
take the minutes. She is my backup, so if you could motion for me as secretary and hers alternate, I'd appreciate it.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mike, would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And the motion passes? Six to zero? Okay, appointment of the treasurer. Is there a motion to appoint Dr. Seagris as the treasurer for the remainder of the school year? And then Dr. Hedgecourt?
Uh-huh.
As the treasurer for next school year?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Rhonda, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
I can get my computer.
He's tired.
He's tired. All right, sorry, there it goes. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And the motion passes? Six to zero? If you look at, at the information at your staff, at your area, it's these school board member ethics. If you could look at that information, it's a couple pages long. It also includes a copy of the board policy. And there's also a nepotism form as well.
The. Yes, the ethics one, I will need for you all to sign and turn that back in, and I will also need a vote on that, because we have to.
Approve it?
Approve it, and I have to send it back in to MSBA, so they have it recorded that we have. The nepotism forms, if you can get those back to me just as soon as possible, I appreciate that. So we have that on file with HR.
Is there a motion to approve this school board ethics?
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, without Mike and Rhonda? Whenever you're ready. Yeah, they're.
Is everyone ready to vote? Yes. You good?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes. And the motion passes? Six to zero? Appointment of the delegates and the alternates, according to policy of the board, our district receives two delegates and alternates. And I will take a motion for those delegates.
Do you just need, can you do them two at the same time, or are we gonna do one?
Mm-hmm, you can do two at the same time.
I'm gonna make a motion for Latonya to be a delegate, and then I'll make a motion after that for Rhonda, but obviously that can go whichever direction.
Are we gonna make them at the same time?
Makes no difference however you wanna do it.
Let's make them together.
People are gonna vote against you, again.
That's fine.
So I'll make a motion for Latonya to be a delegate.
So it's done the same way? Excuse me? It's done the same way as the other director? Or do we, because it's a motion, we have to, we have to vote yes or no? Right. So, okay, we have, we have a motion to appoint Ms. Williams first. Ms. Williams?
Okay, yes. We're gonna ask a different question.
That's okay. Ms. Miller?
No.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And the motion passes? Five to one?
And we have a motion to appoint Ms. Chesney as the other delegate. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yeah.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And the motion passes? Six to zero? Okay, the alternates. Is there a motion to appoint an alternate?
I'll make a motion for Kim Miller to be an alternate.
Yes. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And the motion passes? Six to zero? Is there a motion for alternate number two?
No, there's only one alternate in there.
Well, because we get the two delegates.
Okay.
So, it's gonna be two alternates.
My mistake.
No, you're good, you're all good.
Read that one.
I'll nominate Mike.
Okay, we have a motion for Mr. Moore as the second alternate. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And the motion passes? Six to zero? Future meetings, our next meeting is April the 28th? 5:30? Is there a motion to adjourn into the work session?
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second? Thank you, that's Mike and Rhonda?
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And the motion passes? Can we do the roll call, please?
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
And the motion passes?
We're here. That was here.
Yes, here.
It's all good.
It's been a long meeting. Okay, approval of the agenda, is there a motion?
I make that motion.
Thank you, Rhonda, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And the motion passes? Six to zero? Items under discussion, the long-range plan. Over to you, Dr. McGinnis.
Sure, so we had an opportunity to meet this morning as a district admin team. I left a one-pager at your stations that concludes some of the talking points that we had this morning. And Dr. Edgar led this with us. I felt like it was very productive. Everybody had a voice at the table. And as a district, we, we thought we needed to remember why we put the bond issue up there, to remember and reflect upon the vision-forward process, and which was all about community engagement and input from them that we needed to take into consideration as we move our district forward. And so you can see those talking points on there. And we wanted to highlight that third bullet, that this bond was about more than just a new building. It was truly about rightsizing our district. And why do we want to rightsize our district? So you can see those points there, and we've, we've talked about this in board meetings, about the class offerings not being an opportunity for all students at the three high schools. We don't have the same experiences available for all of our students. And but maintaining our current buildings is not sustainable. And I think there's a misconception out there that we can staff all three of these high schools for years and years to come, but we all know we are not seeing the pool of people going into education. So that continues to be a concern for us as far as our teacher shortage. And then the enrollment decline. You can see some of those numbers at your stations also, and this is also available online. But Katie, Nive, and TMC mentioned this to us today, we've lost 1,400 students in 10 years. And so that's quite a few kids. But I think that data is interesting as far as enrollment over the years. So we talked about why we planned for the new build. And we know that having a new facility can attract other people to want to live here when you have a strong school system in our community. It would also support a consistent K-12 feeder pattern. So I know all of you have been getting emails and phone calls, much like myself and some other district administrators. We are very emotionally charged right now with people coming to us with their ideas. I do think it's important that we need to listen to our community members and hear people out. Obviously, we can't make all of those requests happen because they're not in agreement. And so we have some tough decisions to make, but ultimately, we need to make those in the best interest of our students. And we do need change, we need action, we have to do that. And so we talked about moving forward with the long-range plan, but we also want to make sure everyone realizes, we spent way more time focusing on Plan A, and it passing. We didn't plan for the bond to fail. So it's going to take some time for us to regroup, communicate, have some dialogue, and work on Plan B and what we do from here on out. The consensus from our group this morning was that we are a two-high-school community. Sustaining three high schools is not gonna be. Sustaining three high schools is not gonna be doable for us right now with this declining enrollment. That, that's our vision and what we see right now as a collective team. So you can see there, right sizing the district at the end, academics and equity so that, and the purpose of this is that our students have equal opportunities at the two high schools. And so we still believe aligning our feeder pattern, aligning school boundaries. And then, we talked about this morning surveying internal and external stakeholders because we need to understand why it pa, or why it didn't pass. We do, we need to hear that feedback from our community members. I know you guys see things on social media and hear things in your circles, I do as well. I think there's value in getting that feedback from our community members and working with them for Plan B. That being said, I think we also need to take action because we've been kicking this can down the road for a long time.
I can agree we need movement, but I think now, if we can just catch our breath, let the dust settle after that, and listen to the community. It doesn't mean we, we won't go through, it just means that for right now, because of the vote saying no, we've got to listen. We've got to hear their reasonings, and just hear their hearts. So I don't feel like it's good that we're gonna plow it right on through without listening, or just catching our breath. Just let it settle, and then perhaps pull it up again.
What is that, so I guess my question is what everyone is thinking about with timing and timeline? I know that any time that we talk about doing this and we get close to something and then it doesn't happen, that we typically lose a lot of staff. And that we will lose a lot of families. Because at least if they had a plan and they didn't like it, they knew whether or not they were gonna stay here, or if they were gonna leave. But I think there not being a clear path forward creates more loss amongst staff and amongst families. So I guess my question is, you know, it was high school, high school, high school. I think any of us that sat here and worked on this plan for the last several years knew that it wasn't just about two high schools, it's about our middle school design, it's about elementary, I mean, we have such, such variation in sizes. We're not providing the same education across zip codes in our, in our town. So I guess my question to you all is, administration, I guess you specifically, is when you say that we need to catch our breath or hear people's hearts, what is the actual timeframe for that?
Dr. Edgar said this morning, we will start with weekly or bi-weekly, a long-range plan meetings, but at the end of the day, we have to do what's right for kids. And we have to take the time to plan all of that out. Today was just the first meeting after the election, and those details are all not ironed out right now.
Well, and so, and I, I understand all of that, but I think that the community needs to know what does our timeframe look like? And, and I, and I understand, th, there's a lot, there was gonna be a lot either way. You know, if we, if it had passed, there was gonna be a lot of decisions that needed to be made, if it didn't, obviously, this is where we're sitting. So my question then is, are we looking at a Plan B next year? Are we looking at a Plan B in the fall? Are we looking at Plan B by the time Dr. Edgar leaves? Like, tha, that's what I would like to have some clarity on.
We weren't gonna be changing anything for next school year anyways, and there's no way we would have time to be able to pull all that together.
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I, I know that, I know that. But what Plan B said was twenty twenty-six.
Twenty-six, so it'd be fall of twenty-six.
Right, so.
Right, twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Right, exact, right. So, so that's my.
Are you, are you guys still thinking that, Dr. McGuinness?
I believe so, but again, we met for about an hour today.
It's early, but it, yeah, I'm pretty confident it won't be in the fall.
No, not at all.
And that was, that was my question.
Yeah.
So do we have, can we?
In the fall of what?
Tw, uh, this year.
Twenty-five.
No, it's never gonna be in the fall of this year.
Right, okay, I thought you were, I thought you were asking, I thought you were answering a different question. What I would like for us to figure out, and, and if it can't, obviously, I, I'm not asking you to make some sort of commitment today of like, okay, by this date, we'll have it figured out. But if we can have a general idea of, okay, we're gonna go back, here's all the things that we're gonna have to kind of start putting together, is, is Plan B going to be material, materially finalized, like the bulk of it? What elementary schools are going where, what feeder patterns, what middle school alignment looks like? Is that something that we're going to have by the fall of this year? Or are we gonna do this whole year-long thing? You know what I'm saying?
I would assume it would be ready by the fall of this year, I think that's fair for our kids and our families and our staff.
And I would agree with that, and I appreciate that answer.
But I think we have to start with surveying our community and understanding why it didn't pass.
I don't, and I don't disagree, I think that this board and this administration has been very open to surveys, I, it's like one of the best things that we do, that and planning. So I, I agree with that, I agree with having town halls, I agree with focus groups, I agree with all of that. I think some of the, some of the time though, and I think one of the issues with vision forward is that when we ask people for their opinions, the, the people that come are the people that are already are invested, that are watching, that are paying attention. So I think sometimes that kind of skews that response. And at some point, we're gonna have to make decisions. So it, it helps me to understand, and I think if we can have, you know, when we say fall, are we talking leaves fallen on the ground, or are we talking school starts, you know, and again, I understand that you don't have that answer. But I think that we need to narrow down how we get to that so that people know what to expect.
Yeah, like.
Yeah.
I think that's kind of difficult in this, in this kind of feverish time.
There's never not gonna be a feverish time.
There, there is, at this time, we, they just voted no. Let everybody figure out and up, and take opportunities to talk to us kindly, to hold these meetings, to perhaps even get that committee going that we had at one time. Only because they're, they're the reasons we're doing this, it's their children we're serving. So they should have opportunity to speak, and if in those times they don't show, then that already speaks.
So are you, what's your timeframe?
So whether they're invested, excuse me, whether they're invested or not, that, we still need the opportunity to have them participate. In that amount of time, whatever that's going to look like. And if they don't, they don't, and that clarifies position to me.
Well, I think we're saying this, I, I think we're saying the same thing.
But I don't need a timeline, I don't need her to tell me tonight that at this, this time, we're going to have everything done.
I'm not asking for that, what I'm saying is, we've had a Plan B all along, Plan B was always there. And so my, my simple point is, are we going to take another year of kicking this around, or are we gonna go to August? If that is, if we think that reasonably, August, we could have some sort of idea of what's happening, not until August of twenty-six. But if we can have a plan in the next three to four months, I think the sooner people know what's going on, the sooner they can make decisions. Because we have staff that have children here that are like, well, if my kid's gonna go here, I wanna go there. I'm just asking for us to be able to move forward, but it sounds like we're all saying that.
I think we are.
I think we are.
Yeah, yeah, you're, you're saying Kim may have just not, maybe not this week we have those meetings.
Correct, not tonight, we don't have to decide that this is the day we're going to have the, but we want, but we want it as soon as possible. That's not, that's the issue.
It's my under, and correct me if I'm wrong, admin are in an agreement with two high schools, you just need some time in order to work out the plan, in order to present.
Yes.
And that also includes a timeline, correct, am I correct in all this?
I think that's fair to say.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, again, we, we prepared for Plan A, and so Plan B was basically go to two high schools, that'll be Lafayette and Central. And at the end of the day, we're looking at enrollment numbers, we're looking at capacity, but we have to, in good faith, know that that is gonna be best for our kids. That's primary, right? So that's what we have to do, and it's just going to take time to make sure.
Can I speak to that sustainability piece?
Please, please.
You know, I think as, as we navigated Prop Two, we did a pretty good job of talking about the, the academics, the activities that weren't matching. You know, the, the crazy feeder system that we have today, and, and then, and then, you know, a, a consistent middle school model, I think we hit those well. I think we underplayed probably the, the sustainability piece, the, the operational efficiency piece, right? You know, it's, it's hard to say that we don't have any money when we're asking for a big bond. But the truth is, those are two different pots of money. And so operating the number of buildings that we do, not just high schools, remember, we talked about elementary and other, and con, and, and condensing other facilities? So we're talking several roofs here. And, and so I, I would just ask that the administration start to kind of bring the numbers to that, right? So, 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 you know, people say, hey, what we ought to do is just hire a bunch more teachers and make all three schools the same, and, 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 and the truth is.
They're not there.
That money, well, number one, they're not there, but number two, neither is that operational money. And so, and so if we could just do a great job of putting those numbers together for the public to say, hey, look, part of this is, is because of our shrinking population, therefore shrinking dollars to, to spend.
Are you talking, you're talking about the cost? Are you talking about like cost numbers?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I, I think we did that, and I think back to when we had some of those meetings, like there, I, I didn't know that we saw like a huge cost savings, I think it was more in the staff resource.
Yeah.
The shortage of staff.
I do know, you know, I can remember Dr. Seeger sitting over there and saying, hey, you know, we're, we're deficit spending. We're, we're spending more, and so that's not sustainable, right? So, so whatever, whatever inputs are going into that, we, we need to have just a clear understanding and share with the public that this is, this is what's going on with our finances. And, and one could project a continued decline, and then where that puts us in five years.
And I, my, my thing with, I feel like people like to point out the deficit spending, I, but we don't talk enough about what that means. Like, we have a fund bal, we have a healthy fund balance, so we've created our own savings account that as these S R funds come and go, that we've stabilized our ability to do that. So I think sometimes when we talk about, there's a deficit, it tends to make people believe we don't have any money. We do have money, we're doing well, we're strong financially. The problem is we don't have any staff. And, you know, we can talk about, there, there are so many problems with this school district. None of us created those problems. The middle school feeder pattern, the feeder pattern at Carden Park, kids going to every four different schools, there's so many problems. And if we don't do something quickly, it's going to get, it's gonna get bad. So to me, if we can't better align our staff and our resources, and you know, they're not feeling too hot, too hot this week either about what their community feels about them, the things that they see, the people say about them online. So I think there needs to be a significant push for culture and climate, and for them to know that whatever we can take care of here at a local level, and I, and that's something we don't talk a lot about either, is the state of Missouri has said, the state is gonna be less responsible for your funding. You have to look to a local level. So we're gonna have, to me, we're gonna have to control what we can control, and all of these issues, the feeder patterns, the elementary, the middle school.
Yeah.
You're gonna do something big to be able to save test scores. And I don't know that waiting is.
You said we are good financially, I'm concerned after next year with funding, just there's a whole lot of unknowns out there right now as far as funding.
And I totally understand that, and that's public education, but we're in a, we're in a good spot. Obviously, we have to make good decisions moving forward, and races are not, you know, like it. I say, I say that to say, we have done all that we have, we can do. With a three-hundred-million-dollar state budget shortfall, everybody's probably gonna hurt, but we're doing what, what we're able to do. But moving forward, the longer we wait, the more the staff struggle, and the more our kids struggle. So the longer we wait, the more, more that happens.
I think, would you agree with this, Dr. McGuinness, that if staff sees us going to the public, ta, having some listening sessions, talking through what's going on, honing in on some of these staff issues, dollars, sort of related, that, that helps us, I mean, they're not gonna see us not doing anything, right?
Unless we're gonna do anything.
Well.
Unless all we're doing is.
Let's not do that.
You know what I mean, if all we, if all we do is ask and ask and plan and plan, and the staff are like, but I'm coming every day. You know, and you know, that's, to be honest, that's what the four-day week was last year, that was a hail mary to try to infuse, you know, something positive. And that's, in a lot of ways, that was what Prop Two was too. So it's like, though, I, I just worry that the more we kick the can, the more our staff and students struggle.
Well, and then I also think that you were right, Dr. McGuinness. As you mentioned, that we're at a point where change is needed and we gotta make a change, we have to do something. And I, it's just my fear in that our school district has a history of we're almost making change and then we stop, and then we get there and we're so close, and then nothing happens, and the staff sees that. And so I want, I'm speaking, would you please be quiet? And like I said, I think that our staff need to look at a board that is committed and making change finally.
So what are the things, I know that Dr. Edgar had sent us like a list of questions, and I know that you guys probably started talking about those questions, and I'm sure you didn't get hardly through them at all.
Right.
So, and I, I also know that when we were talking about Prop Two, there were a lot of questions that we couldn't really answer. I mean, there were questions about, you know, how will you do coaching staff, how will you do, you know, I don't know, there was a handful of things, I've written them down somewhere. So as you guys move forward, do you anticipate taking kind of the same process as before? I, I'm not entirely as privy to what you all did internally that got us here.
We had some long-range plan meetings, and then it kind of transformed into a facilities committee with not everybody present at the table. I foresee this to go a little bit different in the fall, because I think it is important to have our whole district leadership team on board with that dialogue, this is, these are big decisions, right? So yeah, I see that process looking a little bit different.
And then folding in, because I think last time, because we had the facilities committee, so we were getting a lot of feedback on that. We had done some survey, we had the vision forward information. So then doing what you guys were doing internally and then folding in surveys and focus groups or town halls, something like that?
We've talked about all of that, but nothing was decided upon today, it was a lot of dialogue.
That's right, that's a good direction.
And a lot of, just dialogue. I think it was a healthy meeting for everybody to have a voice at the table. I, we also talked about community support, and I think there's been a lot of talk about a lack of community support, but they've passed things in the recent past. And so that tells me we do have community support, it's just not community support on that particular issue. And so that's what we need to learn.
Well, and I, and I think, you know, and this is hard to, this is hard to do when you're proud of your staff and you're proud of your schools. I don't think people know how bad it is, to be honest with you. I don't think that they, I don't think that they know that, I don't think that people see the staff shortage, I don't think they see the sub shortage, I don't think they, you know, they don't see, it, it was also hard to kind of balance, you know, these schools are not up to par, but we're still gonna have to use them, but we have to make some movement. So I think part, some of it too needs to be, maybe some of these town halls and meetings need to be in the schools, I don't know.
I think they should all be in the schools. We had a period of time where I thought we were gonna have board meetings in our schools as well.
And, and my only issue, and, and I've, I was supportive of that initially, my only concern about board meetings moving is that if you do have a concern and you show up here and then you didn't, you didn't. and then you didn't, you didn't know, so I don't know about, I, I don't know that I'd be supportive of board meetings happening other places, but I would be supportive of town halls happening at each of the thing, at each of them.
That was something else we talked about today.
Because I think we have to listen to the people who voted no as well as the people who voted yes and look at the voting precinct.
Data?
Yes, to see, because I feel like that is also an obvious split in our community as well. And just, and, and I would not be in favor if, if or when we go to two high schools. We've got to change the names. They cannot stay Central and Lafayette or whatever. We end up deciding, because that's where that climate culture, I feel like, comes in. Because I know that when Lake closed and those kids came to Hosea and then Humboldt closes, so that, that part we need to talk about at some point as well. How do we, how do we create a new culture as a two-high-school town?
That's all, but that's also going to cost money to redo. You're saying you would support like rebranding both high schools?
I would.
I just feel like that's going to, we only have control over what we have control over. If you're going to rebrand, you're going to have to paint every floor. I mean, if you don't have the money-
It's thousands and thousands of dollars with uniforms and signage and-
Well, and that's a long way down.
It is, but again, I think we have to listen to our people. I do.
You hear people, people don't want their children to go to particular schools and they're very adamant about that for a variety of different reasons. And that's why I think it has to start almost all over again.
And I agree with that. I'm going to tell you now, the students, I know we out, we talked to them about proposition two, and it didn't pass, but did we talk about Plan B? Because I promise you, a lot of them are not happy with it. So I think the student input is just as good as the community input as well. In fact, that's who we're working for, and the teachers' input. I can also tell you that I've talked to the community and asked them why it failed, and I did get a lot of feedback, a lot of feedback. Now, I'm just going to be totally honest. The first one is, they want to see us complete a project before we ask for more. And I understand you guys are doing it, and I've said that to the community, that they want to see it completed before, yes.
You mean the twenty-four, twenty-million-dollar facilities improvements?
Yes, yes, everything, yes.
Gotcha.
That was a big one. And the other one, and again, I'm just going to be honest. They've asked us as a board to reflect on ourselves, to reflect on how we act and that we need to be professional and we need to be respectful because how can the community back us if we can't show respect to each other? So I feel like that needs to be-
You guys are making this extremely hard.
No, not really.
I will say, it wasn't just one side of town. I went to several sides of town. And I, the community input, I feel like needs to happen. You need to talk to your teachers about the Plan B, the students about the Plan B, your community, and I do suggest that they get involved.
I agree. Is there anything else?
So the questions that Dr. Edgar posted, we're going to talk about those when he's here then. Which I'm okay with that.
All of them are not completed, and we're just going to wait until he's able to come back and discuss those two.
So what do you foresee? Did, where did you guys leave it with your meeting today? As far as like what happens between now with you all, planning-wise, between now and the next board meeting?
Um, Dr. Edgar just said he would be having weekly or bi-weekly long-range plan meetings in the future. So that's where we left off. He was prepared to talk about these talking points tonight that we discussed. I think it would be helpful to have everyone involved in the long-range plan going forward. We haven't had that.
What, can you speak some, I don't know your, what you're referring to when you say that.
I'm saying like we had the facilities committee, right? And not everybody was at that table.
When we had, are you, so when you're saying the facilities committee, are you talking about the one that we, that the board had?
No, I'm referring to when we went to UVA learning and Dr. Edgar came back and put committees in place.
Internal committee.
Internal-
See, and we, I didn't, we didn't know about those.
No, you guys came.
We did.
Yeah. I think the last one we had was in January, but a team of us were in a little city.
We were thinking about.
But that's tough when you have just part of the admin team at meetings and then not the rest. So I think we just, I think the plan going forward is to have our chief's cabinet all on board.
And all of us. And not us, yeah, yeah.
Well, I mean, our plan is to provide recommendations to you as a board.
Yeah, thank you.
That's the plan. But again, we want community input, have staff dialogue, and then provide a recommendation on our stance, what we think we should do going forward.
I like it.
If there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mike. Is there a second?
I'll second. Thank you, Jennifer. Put a call button, please.
Yes. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Chosney?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
And Ms. Williams?
Yes. The motion passes. This meeting is adjourned.